I am, hello, good afternoon.
Hello.
I'm going to share my screen and bring up a brief presentation. Alright, so you have before you today for your honor bodies consideration of a final plat for the Markley Edition, generally a replat of two lots in the Sunny Side Edition located at 739 Funston. This slide just shows the general location as well as confirming the current zoning and future land use designation or to and residential. And that aligns with the proposed use of this proposed final plat. You should have gotten in your materials a copy of this final plat which is before you today. Generally, this is a one block plat with nine new lots. You'll notice four single family lots designated in block one and five two family lots in block two. A clarification that these lots will be subdivided after the construction and the party wall will be constructed on the legal definition of the legal option. And there's also a trap designated in block two for stormwater detention. And the stormwater management plan has been submitted, reviewed and approved by the engineer. Another note that on this final plat, the developer has indicated that the parkland dedication fee will be paid as each lot is developed instead of in a bulk sum at the time of final plating. And then this fee will go into a fund managed by the city that is dedicated to the improvement of neighborhood parks or greenway trails. I also included in this presentation a quick snapshot from their site plan that further indicates the buildings to help visualize what's proposed. You'll also note the proposed sidewalk improvements along Funston and Mason Street. On January twenty seventh, the final plat was approved by the planning condition, on the planning commission with conditions. Two administrative variances were granted and they requested a resubmital with the parkland fee issue resolved. The final plat has been resubmitted that resolves the comments and that is the copy in front of you this afternoon. And staff believes that final plat is in substantial conformance with the city's subdivision regulations. We recommend approval of the final plat and the acceptance of easements. And then I don't know if the developer is present, but I'm either happy to answer questions or defer to the developer.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Jennifer? Do you have any questions for Sean? Sean, you want to, you want to say anything? Come on up. Oh, you can sit, please.
Mayor Crowley and Commissioners, thank you for having me here. One thing I wanted to ask upon because of the development agreement was was done so quickly. Was handed us a very short time, I did have legal counsel review that development agreement. And what we found was Article nine, section nine one to be ambiguous. Therefore, our council has drafted an alternate method of guarantee of the installation per Article nine, section nine one. With your permission, I would like to present a copy of this draft at this time to review prior to final approval.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll certainly take it, that'll probably.
It's probably gonna.
You know, if legal counsel is involved, that's fine. But I just want to tell everybody, and I think I explained this to Sean, this is the first glance that you have on it. We sent it out to him last week and thinking that you're going to want to look at it again next week. But if there are any changes in this, then we need to have it and have our legal counsel look at it.
That's why I'm presenting this now, just so that we would all have a chance, you guys would have a chance to look at it.
Well, and I assumed, and I'm sorry for assuming here, that we would probably be looking at this again next Monday anyway. And that would probably give substantial time for legal counsel to review anything that you had for.
It's pretty straightforward, it's really just asking the section that asks for the money to be held by the city, more or less, we would just ask that we would be able to provide a letter, irrevocable credit from our bank to substantiate that guarantee. That's the only, that's really the main difference. So, yeah.
You're talking about D, aren't you, Sean, one D?
Yes, yes.
And on the surface of that, I certainly don't have any problem with that. But I would want legal counsel to tell you, they don't have any problem with it. I'm not sure I've renewed my law license from WSU or ESU.
And the only, the main reason I consulted with my, I wanted to make sure I understood it, you know, fully. And that was the main reason I did that, I wanted to make sure I was covering all my bases, so. As far as comments, wanted to first of all, thank all the individuals that were involved in helping us get this project going and making it a reality. The Markley Edition is dedicated to the memory of my father. My father purchased a lot of land over there on Lincoln Street and Funston and actually installed the infrastructure on it, had no clue what he was really going to do with it. At the time, I was actually building and it was kind of funny because I told my dad, it was, I'm like, I think you're making a big mistake buying that land. You know, but you know, the fortunate thing is that he saw the vision that I didn't see. And I ended up partnering with my dad and built out all of the land that he ended up putting the infrastructure on, so. So that's, this is kind of dedicated to, in his, is his name, so is the reason we named it Markley Edition. Very blessed to be able to continue to develop that area. And I did want to express some disappointment as well as, as excitement. My disappointment is, comes in the manner of the way some departments handled this development. Extremely disappointed in the way it was handled. And not every aspect of this, it was just certain departments. My excitement comes that, I'm very excited to be able to create homes in this community and create tax revenue in this community. I know that's what we need extremely bad. My concern is that, I'm hoping we can move forward in the way that projects are handled by the city and by departments and learn and be able to be more accommodating. I think that's huge, you know, being able to be accommodating to the builders. And, and that's really about all I have to say about it. I'm extremely happy that we did end up having, let me make this comment, we did end up having a situation come up towards the end of the, of this process. And I'm extremely pleased at the, the great professionalism at which this was handled to resolve. I'm very happy with that. So we're, we're excited and, and we hope to continue to bring big projects like this in front of you guys. This is just the beginning of what I plan to do here. I just would like to see hopefully a better grasp on the way things are handled in the future. So as far as when we're presenting projects. But I, I thank you all for your time and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do this in this community. If anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer it as far as the development or anything we're doing.
I'm glad you're doing this thing, Sean, I know we, we've got our housing study and we continue to think of all the different types of housing this town needs. And what I came across, when I came away from that study was, we need a little bit of everything. I mean, it's just big, small, in between, all that. And so this would be really fit in with that plan, so I appreciate your investment in our community, so. This is not the last one, what I'm saying.
No, definitely won't be, good.
And if I could piggyback off what Commissioners Skidmore had said, yes, I appreciate what you've brought forward to us and recognize that this is your business and, and we appreciate you making a commitment in our community. I know that we had talked about, and this is really more for the public who may be listening. We did talk about a park payment in lieu of a park. And this is a complete block and several families will be living in this. And so you do not have a park plan.
Correct, no, no, the, the, so basically, the, there was a couple of different ways we could do this, we could make. Obviously, we don't have the room for a park. So with that being said, the, the secondary way of fulfilling that obligation is making one payment upfront or making payments on each individual lot as they're, as they're built out. And we chose to make the, the payments on each individual lot as they were built out to fulfill that, you know, that obligation, so. But yes, you are correct, we don't have, I mean, we're, we do have a, as you've seen on the plat, we have a water detention area. We obviously don't have any, any room for any park and, and so. But we're super excited because this is like, you know, you literally go a block and a half, or a half, have a block and you're to the trail. So we're super excited about being able to build near that area.
Great.
Yep, that's correct.
And so another thing, and I know that many developers in our community have taken advantage of it, but neighborhood revitalization has also been a really big program for our community. Is that a program that you anticipate participating in?
Absolutely, so actually what happened was that area did not have that, was not, it did not fall within that map. And so what I actually did, when Charlotte was still here, I asked Charlotte, I said, is there a way that I can petition to have this area added to that map? And she gave me the, basically the directions to follow to, to do that, and that's what I did. I basically drew up a, a presentation of why I thought it should have been in that map, included in that map and submitted that. And it got it, it got added in, so yes, we will be taking advantage of that on this development as well, yeah.
Well, I appreciate community development, working with you so well on that particular part. That's certainly good when we see our, our developer, our departments working well hand in hand with individuals. And then you will be building sidewalks?
Yes, yes.
So there'll be a sidewalk on Funston and then a sidewalk on, I'm sorry, I'm going to miss the other street, Mason, great.
Correct, yep.
Great. Awesome, well, this is exciting stuff.
Any other questions? Sean, too, I too want to repeat what Commissioners Skidmore and Commissioner Taylor have said. I've said it before and I'll say it again, that I appreciate what you're, the commitment you're making financially to our community. This isn't, you know, the first nine houses you're, you're doing. There's a lot more you've got going on right now and, and you guys, you and a few other developers here are fulfilling some of those needs that that housing study gave us, so. We, we certainly appreciate it.
Yeah, I've personally stopped, you know, at Slade's sites and different ones and thanked them for what they're doing. I'm excited, you know, because this is what we need, you know, we need a bad and, you know, it's, I'm just excited. Even though those guys are my competition, I guess you per se, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm excited that everybody, I would like to see more. Well, because it's, you know, I, I welcome it.
With only having eight houses on the market just a couple of weeks ago, I don't think there's much competition.
Right, exactly, exactly, yeah, we need more of it, for sure. Okay, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Commissioners, do you want to hold this over till next week, especially with the information that Sean has? Sean, do you have that sheet? Okay, you'll, you'll get it to Ms. Van Houten for us, please, thank you. Yeah, so we'll, we're okay with holding this over till next Monday? That'll move us on to item two, it'll be a termination of redevelopment agreement for the Coves. Tyler, are you available?
I am, good afternoon, mayor and commission. Before I launch into things, I might see if Richard wants to provide some background on this before I sort of give my two cents on it. And if not, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to, I just.
That's, that's why we have Tyler on here, so he can explain this.
Alright, well, fair enough, fair enough. So I know that when Blaine was going through the process of putting some of the Cove's lots up for sale, I think is when this question emerged. And it, it was evident, I think during that process, that the city's existing development agreement with the original developer of the Coves was still officially in place. And in fact, had been recorded against some of the Cove's property. And so having come to that realization, Richard and Blaine and I discussed whether that agreement should be terminated and if so, how to do so in order to release that as an encumbrance against those properties. So I took a look at the agreements, have, have identified some steps that if it makes sense, we can move forward with in order to release that existing development agreement from the real property records and also to officially terminate it because of course, the developer never performed. Richard, is that fair, is that a fair characterization?
That is, that is fair, Tyler, one of the reasons I had Tyler explain this, Richard Knight, City Manager, is because this all took place before I became manager here. So I wasn't quite sure of the history, but it just makes sense to me, and it made sense to Blaine to go ahead and talk about having that redevelopment agreement be terminated.
I notice, Tyler, this is Sarah Kayler, I noticed that the development agreement is not in our packet. Is that by design because we don't need to see it, or tell me about?
No, that's a good question. It certainly, it certainly can't, could have been included in the packet. We didn't include it in the packet because I wasn't sure that that would have been beneficial. We can, we, you know, move this to another, a subsequent study session, include that in the packet. And if there are questions about the terms of the agreement or, or, you know, what the developer did or didn't accomplish, we could certainly explore those. What I've done for my part is taken a look at that existing agreement and outlined a couple of different steps that I think would be necessary if you all wanted to move forward with getting this terminated and getting this released. We would need to, those steps would include sending a notice of default letter to the existing developer and its attorney, waiting thirty days for them to respond and then bringing a resolution back to the commission, probably at your second meeting in April, for you to take formal action to direct me and staff to terminate this agreement and get it released to the real property records. But I didn't put any of that in the packet for now, just because I wanted to first discuss what the consensus of the commission was before we go down those details.
Tyler, how big is that agreement?
That agreement is probably sixty pages, if I had to guess.
Title's Mike, is it creating an encumbrance on the real estate in any way, or?
I, I think it, I think it would raise a question. If, if anybody took a close look at a title policy for one of those residential lots in the Coves, I think an attorney would raise a question about what the existing development agreement was and what the property owner that was buying that lot had in terms of an obligation. So I think it's probably a good idea to get this released of record. I don't know that it's hindering marketability, but I think because the question was raised in the process of selling these Cove's lots, that kind of makes itself evident that, that it did come up and somebody's due diligence and probably will continue to do so in the future.
Commissioners, any other questions for Tyler? If not, how would you like to proceed? I, I certainly think, like you'd spoken earlier about Tyler, getting us that information and then having another conversation. Yeah, next, next Monday, if we could, please?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you, Tyler.
Very good, thanks, guys.
That will move us on to the next item, which is the homeless donation challenge. Paul Bean came last week and spoke to us about this. Commissioners, did you have, I guess, another week to kind of mull us over and figure out what, how we wanted to proceed here? Paul, do you have anything, sorry, Sarah. Paul, do you have anything else you want to add?
Just sure we're at.
Paul, come up here, please, thank you. I don't want to yell at me because I can hear you.
Just to say that we're at seventy-five hundred in donations and a goal was ten, so that's where we're at.
Paul, could you tell us a little bit about, I know that last week I had asked you about some other larger entities that you may be requesting or had requested funding from. What about our partners at the county, did they make a commitment?
You'd asked me last week, I'd said two thousand dollars is what the county gave us.
And what about others, have other entities made a commitment?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think that we should match the donation that is given, has been given by the county. I don't know that we're looking to move that today or if we want to put it on the agenda. But that would be my suggestion.
Commissioners, do you agree? I, I too agree, and I don't, quite honestly, I don't think, I mean, do we need to move it to an agenda? I think we could just approve, you know, approve it now and move it forward if we're, if we're comfortable with that. Okay, that's what we'll do, we'll match the, the county which was two thousand and.
To Hope House.
Yep, and it'll go to Hope House for, for that.
Thank you very much.
Paul, thank you. That'll move us on to the Cedar Street Stormwater Project. Dennis, are you available?
He brought in the big guys.
Yeah, we brought the big guys.
Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. You had in your packet or have in your packet a memo describing the project that we're talking about. This, to begin with, is a stormwater project and I reinforce that because this is not any kind of special streets project or out of budget money. This is a stormwater project. The thing that it does accomplish is not only cleaning up some of our stormwater from thirteen to fifteen street, which we all know, we have a, a fair amount of pooling that takes place from thirteen to fifteen. But it is also going to allow us to continue with our Cedar Street project. This will knock out another two blocks of mill and overlay of this, along with the, the curb and gutter and then all the stormwater. But also will allow us to widen this, this section of Cedar Street. I think as you all know, this section of Cedar Street is one of the busiest intersections in town. And we believe in, in the discussions that we've had that that what we are proposing here certainly makes sense, but to take our community down the road. The financial part, I can certainly be more than happy to let Director Landis speak to. And then any other questions that you may have, that is why the big guns are here, to, to answer any of those kinds of questions that, that you may have related to this project.
So one thing that should be noted about this was, this was including the original stormwater design pack, project from two thousand fifteen, sixteen, somewhere in there. So the first two phases have been built, which was Ash Street and the fifteenth. So this project was, has been designed partially. As Dennis said, it will include some widening, but it's not a total redo by any means. But the original conceptual design of doing the stormwater modeling and everything like that was completed with the original study that was done.
Yeah, and I actually believe the genesis of this comes from a study done twenty years ago by another engineering firm. The city had a stormwater study done, broke it up in the basins and we took some of those projects from that when we were talking about the stormwater utility and what projects those funds could be used for to help mitigate stormwater runoff. Of which there's a plethora of projects.
And another one to note is, it puts us back on track a little bit. This actually is a capital improvement plan that, or part of the, a project in the capital improvement plan that was designated for two thousand twenty-two. And quite honestly, y'all, it's probably been quite a while since we hit one on the year that was supposed to happen.
So can you kind of give us an idea of what the additional costs are, because that's a significant change?
Yes, this is the layout of the, can you share the screen?
Paul, are you wanting this one?
No, the ones, the attachments, the, yeah, the PDF, it's just like four or five sheets. So a few things, one, construction pricing has jumped significantly in the last few years. Because the original estimate was put together when the original design was done. And what we've seen in the changes in cost is unprecedented before, so that's one. Two is the widening and then the mill and overlay. By doing that, so there will be some additional fee for that. So I think we had about two hundred and forty-four thousand was the, the new change. So some of that was caught, changing cost. Then a little bit more design, inspection. And then what's highlighted in yellow is the change, the additional work that would be required for that.
And some of that I added in because as long as we're there, let's fix the sidewalks that need to be fixing and let's get our intersections up to ADA compliance. And can you share with the commission how much you are widening the street on both sides?
So the plan, so what's in front of you right now, it's on the screen, that was the original plan that was done. I believe the original plan is thirty-one feet, we're, we're increasing it three feet to thirty-four feet to match the rest of Cedar, not the rest, a majority of Cedar Street.
So a foot and a half on each side?
A foot and a half on each side is what, or, yeah. Yeah, to, what we're looking at now. And the plan right now is to do it on both sides of the street, just based on utilities where they are. We're trying to make the least impact as possible. Because when you do widen the street, one thing we have to look at is driveway slopes that you, because we're not, we can't rebuild driveways all the way up to the house. So that's why we thought about just trying to do it, both, same on both sides, is we're, we're widening it. So it'll be the three to four feet through there. Pretty much from fifteenth to thirteenth, we will be redoing the intersection on thirteenth street, which a big part of that is we will be putting in all new ADA ramps. So the eight ADA ramps that are on that intersection, the ones on fifteenth and Cedar, two of them were, one was replaced with the original sidewalk project, one was replaced a few years ago when we did the other stormwater projects, but we, so we will redo the ones that are crossing Cedar Street.
So does this also take care of the water ponding at the fourteen, at fourteenth intersection?
Yes, yeah, so the original design of this, I think if you go to the next page on the PDF or the third page, already included the redesign of the intersection of fourteenth street. Yeah, this is it. Of doing a concrete apron, this will change a little bit when you widen the street out. So the, the sidewalks will kind of jog on fourteenth street at the intersection. So they get out of the curb radius and so you can have a little bit better, have them aligned.
So is the widening strictly an aesthetic thing, just because the rest of it is, or is it actually, is there a purpose behind it? I mean, because there's not any, there's not any parking allowed there, I don't believe.
There's not, not any parking allowed there. The reasoning that we moved, tried to move forward with the widening was that, again, fifteenth and Cedar is probably one of the busiest intersections in town. We have traffic from the hospital, from the emergency services, you know, feeding out onto Cedar from both thirteenth, fourteenth and fifteenth. And as much as anything, it's a safety factor, it gives everybody a little more room right there to, to be able to maneuver around.
So with the delivery trucks to the hospital, ambulances, fire trucks, all that just kind of helps with the, yeah, school buses gives a little bit more room. And we have the rideaway there, which helps. The plan right now is not to purchase any rideaway or anything like that. All work's going to be, just like Ash Street, all work's going to be done within the rideaway, which is good. A lot of these rehab projects you run into, you have to go through and purchase right away, which is, you know, the most expensive and longest part of it. So this, it allows for it.
And Commissioner, I would say that, that I absolutely agree with you and staff agrees with what you're saying. We believe there's one other section from ninth to eleven that, that needs the widening also, mostly because of what you just said, because of the parking that takes place from the. mostly because of what you just said, because of the parking that takes place from the university. But from 11th to 13th, maybe not quite so, so necessary.
That 9th to 11th gets a little dicey.
And then, if, if we are doing asphalt pavement overlay now, I mean, since that's an additional cost, what was, what were we anticipating doing originally?
So, what we did on, the original design of Ash Street did not have an overlay in it. There was actually funding for it, I apologize about that. There was actually funding for it after the fact, and so it was, it was add-on. So, it would have just been, go through, soft cut the curb, rip out the curb, put the curb back. By doing, by widening it, we're still doing that, we're just moving the curb out. We do a full-depth pavement replacement, bring it up two inches below the finished grade, and then do one overlay from curb to curb, so it's still continuous and it doesn't look like, doesn't look like that you had a little bit of an overlay on one side or the other. And so, almost look like a brand-new street.
So, Commissioner, what was, what helped on Ash Street? Is that the bids came in lower than what the estimate was, and we still had money left over in the bond money? So, that was used to do the new street.
Now, Ash Street is kind of my neck of the woods, and Commissioner Skidmore's neck of the woods, and, but it looks amazing. I think that individuals who maybe don't realize that that project, the significance of that project being a stormwater project, but it has made a huge difference in the citizens over there, and really, it's made a difference just when you drive up and down Ash Street, if it's rained or whatever. And so, I am interested and very excited about the addition and the, not, not the addition, but the, the, the improvements to Cedar Street.
And this does also include a very small leg of Oak Street, where we're replacing some curb inlets, because there's one curb inlet from, I think, 13th and Oak to 15th and Oak. So, we are putting, we're not redoing the street or anything, or widening it, but we are putting in new curb inlets, all on the west side, and that is part of this project.
Does water flow south at this location, or which way?
Yep, I believe 13th is about the high point. Yep, and then it goes, so the, this basin is pretty much the hospital, all the way to Mulberry, and all the way to 15th, and then all the way up to, like, south to Ottawa Bible Church. Like, that's pretty much this entire basin. So, the first project was 15th, was the trunk line. And so, now it's set up to that you can make improvements upstream a little bit at a time to improve on that.
So, we plan to bond this out, is that what we're talking about, doing debt finance, or Melanie, what?
Do you prefer I come up there?
Yeah.
So, we'll probably have further discussion about this at our next study session, and when we, when this comes back to you again. But the intent would be to debt finance this over 10 years. And, at least that's our initial look at that, and we've looked at the impact on the fund and what that might look like. And it really fits well with keeping a good solid cash or fund balance in the stormwater fund by doing that over 10 years. We probably could extend that to 15, but we may not need to do that. And we've also taken a look at some of the other upcoming projects to see where, you know, how that might fit in there as well in the next couple of years. So, when we do come back to you, we'll probably want to bring back to you a project authorization, resolution, those types of things that would go along with the intent to debt finance this project.
I didn't know if we can combine some needs, is that what you're saying, on one bond, or is that?
So, we probably will do that. We have a couple of other projects, and then also two bond issues that could be refunded in the middle of this year, and so it would make sense for us to lump everything together and hopefully get a much better rate on everything.
Is there been consideration about adding additional stormwater projects into a bond beyond? I mean, I know that this is just a portion of Cedar Street, so is there, has there been consideration of expanding the Cedar Street project at all?
We have had that discussion. What we believe makes sense at this time is to complete this 13th to 15th Street project, and then move down the road a couple of years. We can find ourselves with a declining fund, fund balance if we try to take on too much at once. And so, that is what we're trying to avoid at that point.
And here's, Dennis is exactly right, here's the fiscal side of that. We have not raised those rates in five years, and we're not suggesting we do that. But we are paying one improvement off, and we're trying to dovetail this into this. And we're trying to be fiscally, fiscally responsible so we can continue to carry a, a good cash balance in there and still do projects in the future. Because remember, these funds are also for repair of, of curb and gutter, repair of other storm inlets. 50% of this was supposed to be for maintenance of existing systems.
Commissioners, any other questions?
You anticipate this project to start this year?
We would hope, yes, that we could move this forward and get it out to bid and get it accomplished this year, actually.
Any concept on how long this project may take?
I think our inspectors, we budgeted 75 days in there, but it's hard to, it's hard to say. It kind of depends a lot on what the, what we want to do for traffic. Do we want to make it one way? Do we want to shut it all down at once and do it all? And that's where the coordination with the hospital and emergency services, all that comes in of how we do that. But we kind of look at the worst-case scenario of what it would look like on, I'm sorry, I have allergies really bad, so I lost my voice. Where we kind of looked at worst-case scenarios for construction days. I think it'd be the 75 to 90, 60 to 90 days, feel pretty comfortable about. I think that's pretty much where we ended up with Ash Street and 15th kind of combined.
Do we have traffic count in town, Dennis? Do we know traffic count on different thoroughfares?
I don't know that we've ever traffic counted that particular intersection that I'm aware of. So, no, not that I'm aware of. We've done some different counts, but typically, it's been pedestrian and bicycle counts more than, than vehicle counts.
Part of the scope of this project on the engineering side was to have multiple public meetings, bringing in the hospital and emergency services to go over it, but just like we did at 15th and Ash Street, sending out letters to the landowners and setting up some open houses to kind of bring them up to date, talk about schedule. Hopefully, at that point, we'd have a contractor on board and kind of give, I think that worked out great with the last projects, is they knew the contractor was going to be, the contractor gave them a point of contact. So, and we had minimal issues that, you know, could be resolved very quickly, so. But that's part of the scope, would be to have those public meetings again.
And it would be ideal if it wasn't when school was in session, so, because you've got Garfield right there, and you've got Ottawa University that comes that way. And reality of it is, Cedar Street is the bypass of Main Street for the City of Ottawa. And if you've lived here a week, you know that that's how you get around. Sorry, chief, but that's, you, you know it too, but, and that's, that's how people get around. So, if we could do that when school wasn't in session, that would certainly be ideal, but I know that we don't always get ideal.
Commissioners, any other questions? Can we, Paul, can we have that PDF sent us? Thank you. Are we okay with putting this on for next Monday for another discussion?
Again, Mayor, that PDF does not have the widening in it.
Do you have anything that shows that?
Well, I can have something by the end of the week.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
That has, they emailed me this on my way here and said they're printing it.
It doesn't have to be anything specific, do you? I think more so just vaguely, so we can kind of look at it for, for, you know.
Yeah.
Aesthetic purposes.
That's how I designed it and I gave it.
More like they did in the old days.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
All right, that'll move us on to a continued discussion of American Rescue Plan Act funds. Melanie, you're up again. Welcome back.
We have a new PowerPoint, because I didn't pull up the last week's PowerPoint.
Well, I did have a new PowerPoint, but I was trying to make it easy on Paul, so I really just provided the one slide. So, if he could bring that up. But ever, all of the other information is exactly the same, but what we did is reorganized this a little bit. So, just for, for our listening audience, a brief rundown is, we're, this is our third discussion talking about our American Rescue Plan Act dollars that we have been allocated, and we've received half of those dollars, and we expect to receive the second half of those dollars around July of this year. We do have until 20, the December 31st of 2024 to either spend or basically be under contract to spend those dollars with projects, and then with all of the final monies being spent by December 31st of 2026. And in all of our previous discussions, we've had conversations about what they can be used for, and we have brought to you a couple of different listings of priority projects and some other allowable types of projects, as well as some opportunities to work with other agencies in the community as, through a kind of a sub-recipient granting process for these dollars. But our goal tonight was to talk to you about a couple of items, which on this slide you'll see in the yellow, which are the, the items that we would recommend moving ahead with at this time, and then further exploring the rest of the items and/or alternates to that list.
And when we talk about moving ahead, we, we view this as items that we need to get started through the process. There needs to be, the process includes, how do we bid them? What criteria do we have? We have to shore up some engineering, but i-if you agree, these are items that make sense in moving ahead, understand that doesn't mean in a month, we'll actually be ready to get them out to bid. There's still parts of the process that we have to work on. The, the rest of the items, such as the OMA signage board, I'm still having some discussions with Tiffany about that, some ways she can leverage that. But she's off today after her big sellout down there at, at OMA on Friday night. She deserves to take the day off. And the others are things we need to work through also, but at least these four give you an opportunity to start moving some through the process. And we need, I, I, I would say that we need on a staff level, we need to be able to start doing that, because we're going to learn some things in the process that may help with the rest of the money on the backside.
Any, any questions, Commissioners? Well, I, I, I agree. I think those are four projects, or four things that we should, we certainly can, can get, you know, started on. One of the good things about kind of hesitating on others is that, like you've mentioned before, we haven't received all the funds anyway. So, that's a significant amount of the initial funding that we got, and still more to come, but that can be worked out down the road. But I think certainly, in my opinion, that those four projects are ones that we can certainly get started, you know, either set out for bid or funding or whatever.
We'll bring the next part of the process back to you, because we want you to clearly understand it, and we want our citizens to clearly understand it, once we clearly understand it.
Which we never, when we fail to understand it, let's just, the reality of it. It's as clear as that we can.
We may have.
This isn't, this isn't different, this is a different slide than was presented to us last week, and so there's been some changing there. And so, citizens maybe looked at last week's slide and then, and then thought, okay, they've kind of got a grasp on what's going on. This slide could be sent to us and possibly, and can be definitely made available to the public, so that they kind of know where we've changed.
Yes, and, and all that has happened here is it's only been reorganized within that, what was in just a green and white table before to show the four recommended Phase 1 items on the left. But everything is still there, it still totals the amounts that were, and you're right, the total suggested priority projects, I did move up to the upper table, that reimbursement to the city, so that's why you see the changing dollar amounts. But everything that was presented on this slide last time is still on this slide. Just to reorganize a bit, to, to highlight those suggested Phase 1 items to move ahead on.
What, what are you looking for from the City Commission regarding, what are you, what are you looking for from us either today or at a meeting? What would you like us to do?
I would tell you, if you're in agreement, if there's a consensus amongst you that we go ahead and start moving forward, then we would start moving forward to refine that process. And understand, we're going to be bringing this back to you. You need to understand it, because you're responsible for it.
And I might just throw out to, to further refine. So, when he says, when we figure out what it is that we need to do next, there's some very specific processes that need to happen. And so, some of those, because it's federal grant dollars. So, for instance, we, we already have, and we had bid out some things previously on the Fire Department relocation study. I'm using that as an example. We won't be able to use those bids, we're going to have to start that over, and we'll contact them, and I'm sure they'll understand that because we're using these dollars, we have to follow a new process. But, so there is a little bit of extra work that has to go into each one of these projects. So, by just getting the estimates, by updating the engineering costs, by doing all of those things, each one of these will probably have its own set and timeline and checklist of items that has to happen, but they will all be put together under a practice or a procedure that we put in place for purchasing under these granted dollars. And we'll be happy to share those with you when we get those clearly written out, so everybody understands and they're all on the same page. And then, part of that process is going to be tracking these individually, so that we know exactly where we started and exactly where we stopped on every single item, because we have to report them that way as well.
And at this point, you're just wanting to know if we're okay, or if we're, we have a consensus of just the recommended Phase 1 items? So, at this, I mean, we're not really moving to the right side of the table.
Correct. If you agree that the, that these, those four items are something that, that we should be using these dollars for, and that we are ready to at least start down the road of process for each of those items, then that, that is really what we'd like to start moving towards at this time.
Commissioners, how, are we in consensus that we're okay with the items on the recommended Phase 1, that they can proceed? I think you have a consensus.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us on to comments by our city manager.
You know, Commissioners, I have nothing specific for you today.
All right. Comments by the city commissioners? Commissioner Graves?
I have none today.
Commissioner Kayla?
I attended the Regional Childcare Conference Conversation, is what it was called, in Paola this last Friday. I was unable to stay for the entire event, and I'm sorry that I did, because I think there was probably some good work done. Paul Bean, who's behind me, was there and helped to lead that. I do think it's a conversation that we need to continue to have. I think that childcare is certainly an economic development factor for so many families. If you don't have somewhere safe for your kids to be, it's really hard to go to work. And, or obviously, and sometimes it's just impossible to go to work. So, childcare is certainly important to know and to be aware of for economic development. So, I think it's just the beginning of a conversation. I think this conversation has been had several times. My hope is that we actually move the conversation further down the line this time. So, I appreciate the invitation to be a part of that conversation and look forward to see what happens next.
Mayor Pro Tim Skidmore?
Oh, congratulations to KU for sharing in the Big 12 basketball title, that's all I'm going to say about that.
It sounded really.
Yeah, yeah, into the mic, please.
That was too loud as it was.
Such a vigorous congratulations, too.
Is that really it?
That's enough.
Okay.
That's, that's enough.
That's all you could get out?
Can we back that out?
Edit that.
Commissioner might need some emergency attention.
Comments by the mayor. First of all, Commissioners, I believe we all received, I guess, the. Comments by the mayor, first of all, Commissioners, I believe we all received, I guess, the the old memo, the new email this morning about the lakeside, lakeside lots and park information that we received last year. The reason this is brought up is because we had a discussion last year and it kind of went dormant. And I just want to bring it up again to see if there's any, any new vigor, vigorous conversation that we can have about possibly selling a few more of those lots. I'm suggesting, and this is just to start the conversation, that ten, eleven, twelve and thirteen be sold. Ten and eleven has a, between those two, has a storm drainage easement there. It certainly could get a variance and be combined. But it most likely, I don't want, I don't want to speak for community development, but might not. So certainly those could be sold to two different houses, twelve and thirteen, there is not any, any easements there. So that I'm aware of, so certainly could be combined. So at that point, we could have two, one, two, three or four additional houses over in that area. So like I said, just kind of bringing the information out, if anybody wants, has any comments or, or suggestions, questions or anything like that, certainly let's, let's talk about it a little bit if you don't mind.
Well, and I was sure impressed with the sale price of some of these lots and I think they were, they were reasonable priced and it certainly generated some revenue for the city and I like the idea of using some of that revenue for the parks there. Now, is fourteen and fifteen, was the topography not conducive for those?
So fourteen and fifteen has, has the drainage from the pond between them, so there's smaller lots there. And that's the reason I didn't suggest those.
Yeah, because I, that's some green spaces.
Could thirteen and fourteen be combined?
Possibly, yeah, yeah. I, I, well, I mean, I don't want to speak out of turn, I, I don't, I didn't look at those for any kind of easements, but certainly something we could look into.
But we need more housing, these are nice homes along there and I think this kind of fulfills that study we took that requires some, you know, nice homes to be built in town as well, and spec homes or custom either way.
Certainly from the, the original rendition that we got about the, the possible parking lot, that would have to be adjusted a little bit if, if ten and eleven were sold. And then maybe a few other adjustments, but, but some of these lot sales, if they did occur, would certainly fund, I believe, some of those improvements.
Has there been any communication or any discussion with Ottawa University about their, about their druthers on what they're going to do with four and five?
They did?
Four and five are sold?
Where's four and five?
They're at the bottom left.
Bottom left?
Over here, oh, okay.
I, when we started this conversation, I, I was in favor too of having some of these lots be sold. I'm, and I, I, I want to go back to what we talked about when we were talking with Mr. Markley about parks. I still hold true to, no developer, not you, Mr. Mark, not just you, Mr. Markley, no developers ever come to us and said, I want to build a park, nobody, and why not? It's not financially feasible. So I do think that it's important for us, as the Commissioners, to actually recognize, I think we all do, recognize that quality of life is so important and park space is so critical. If we haven't learned that in COVID where space is critical and space to just be able to kind of breathe in some fresh air and just get out and enjoy the outside, then I'm not sure when we would learn it. But I am in favor of everything, I'm just not in favor of ten being sold. I'd like to keep, I'd actually like ten and eleven not to be sold because I'd like to keep all of that there as park space. But I'd, I'd be interested in seeing if thirteen and fourteen could be combined and, and selling everything but ten. Just because I think that we need, I, I don't think, I'm adamant that we need park space. And I don't believe that any of the developers are ever going to come to us and say, I really want to build a three quarters of a million dollar park because it just doesn't make, there's not a whole lot of return on investment. But there is a huge return on investment for citizens to have a park.
And I certainly agree, and this, this park would have some amenities that nowhere the park in town would have. Certainly with the, the pond, the fishing dock, if we could, and this is just, you know, the original suggestion, a Monarch Station floral area and things like that, so I, I certainly agree. Well, certainly we can gather some more information, like I said, this is just an initial conversation that I think we, that we should have had or could have to kind of get the ball rolling at least. I mean, even as Commissioner Kayler suggests, and even if it's just two or three that are sold or two, at least that could be one or two more houses in there and certainly do a little bit more funding with some of the original ideas that were, that were suggested, like the walking trail and, and shelter house and things like that, so.
Yeah, I failed to mention, besides the price of the lot being sold, I sure like the tax revenues benefited from this. Would you agree, Mr. Crowley?
And keep in mind, these are lot sales from three years ago.
That's true.
I mean, we're probably, I could possibly be getting a little bit more out of, out of these sales today.
So, yeah, I'm in favor, I just don't know the mix or the numbers of lots, but I'm certainly in favor of looking at this again, so it's good.
Well, and if, if we could get plat information that would show easements, just so we could look at that, just so we could figure out what we could and could not combine. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, I just have two more, two more comments, one, I, I want to kind of continue with what Richard was saying earlier about Tiffany. No, I don't think she should have had the day off, I mean, we all did our recovering over the weekend too, but.
What time did you get home? Because I know what time Tiffany got home and I'm just saying.
Yeah. But yeah, I, I want to say congratulations to Tiffany, OMA for sure, and all of the people that volunteered. There was a substantial amount of people that volunteered and necessary. The place was packed, it was busy, it was a really good time, both bands put on a really great show. So it was, it was a wonderful time and hopefully they can continue to do more shows like that. My other comment is happy belated birthday over the weekend, I believe you, you turned seventy years young, so happy birthday. Other than that, I don't have any more comments, the announcements, we have a study. We have a study session next, next month, next Monday at four PM. And then the sixteenth, we have our regular meeting, actually, Mike, let's discuss that, I'm sorry.
Whichever you guys want to do, well, I mean, if, if you're sure the three of you'll be here, leave it in the morning, that's fine. But if you, if there's someone doubtful, we can move it to the evening where I can attend because I've got a commitment, so.
I'm not sure what we have on the agenda at this point anyway. I mean, is that?
I'm not sure.
I'll check, I'll check.
On the sixteenth.
Okay.
I, there's, it's, there's a high likelihood that I won't be here on the evening of the sixteenth, so. Because that's spring break for my kids.
Or, or, well, then let me ask this, Commissioner Graves, are you available, is that, yeah, that's our, that's our morning meeting. So are you available for that meeting for sure?
For the morning one?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Kayler?
Yeah.
And I am too. Michael, Mike, we don't want you to miss out, but, you know, we understand we have other commitments. All right, tell us if we have anything wrong. All right, so we'll do that, we'll just keep it the way it is, so. And then we have our joint meeting with the, with the school district in the county at twelve PM hosted by the county on the twenty-third. Is there anything else to come before the commission and study session?
Which is a week later.
Yes, a week later, the twenty-third, I believe they're off because of spring break.
Spring break.
If not, I will adjourn.